Five. October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four, calling the Granby Planning Board.
Into session.
The first item is minutes. I did mention to the Chair. Vice Chair. I had some issues with accessibility with my files. I'll send them over. There are a couple of minutes to approve. And between now and the end of the year, we'll get, we'll be up to date. So I will say that. There was a request for the minutes from September twenty fourth, so what I will be doing is sending them draft minutes.
A request meaning?
There was a request from the public.
From the public?
For September twenty fourth. So I did finish those. We did not have Granby Media there. So they are line minutes from the public hearing.
That was from September twenty?
Yeah, that was the last time the Board met.
Yeah, okay, that was a quick.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was a quick meeting. So that's, that's in regards to minute, that's what we're at. I'll send those as soon as I get access.
Make sure, make sure when you send that for. I'm assuming you're sending it to Kathy as a draft. Make sure there's draft.
Oh, yeah. I said I will send it to Kathy as a draft, because that was the request. And we'll send that to the Board as well. The Board will adopt it if you're me that are approved of. Correspondence, if any. What I will say is that, you know, there has been lots of conversation regarding hybrid meetings, Zoom. I don't know. I think the Chair has mentioned his thought about Zoom meetings. I know there are Board members that have requested this. I also know that it's easy to do. All I need is computer, maybe a camera. I'm sure there may be one line around that I can utilize. So if that's something that the Board wants to do, I will follow up with the Town Administrator as to, like, what their requirements are. Typically, if you have a hybrid meeting, you have to post it as a hybrid meeting. So people from the public would be able to join in on the call, including your Board. There also is, there also would be requirements that the Town may have adopted as far as rules regarding how votes would be taken at any sort of meeting when there is someone participating virtually.
As an example.
So instead of doing, where you usually do by voice vote, now you have to do a roll call vote for each item. If someone is participating virtually. That's probably the biggest difference.
Who decides whether or not that's? The Board's going to enter?
A hybrid? I don't know, to be honest. I think it, it just was a, it's been a conversation. I know that the Conservation Commission, I think, meets virtually, I think, maybe still. I don't know.
Board of Health does too.
Board of Health. So it is something that could happen. I know the Board likes to meet in person. I prefer meeting in person, but at the same time, there are lots. It's pretty easy to support doing a hybrid meeting.
I've mentioned before, I'm not in favor for, for a lot of reasons. One, technology, you get people talking over each other because there's time delays.
Yeah.
And, and it gets confusing and it, it's a. It's not like there's three Board members and nobody else is. It's, we usually have a lot more going on than that, including an audience. They're a little bit more difficult to, to run. I'm just one, I'm just one person on this Board. I'm not in favor of them. I would, I would concede that nights like tonight, there's no real agenda. Why, why is everybody driving down here? On light agendas, if the Board felt that it would be better to do that, so be it. But as far as when we're having a public hearing. I think there's too much going on and, and many times, some of the things that we do, especially in a public hearing, can be controversial. And I'd rather have everybody in the room.
Yeah, I think if the Board remembers when we tried that, I mean, it's. Public hearings regarding the zoning changes back in two thousand and twenty one.
Yeah.
That was hard.
For, it is, it's hard, but it's easy as a Board, Board members to say, let's sit home and do this, because it's going to be controversial.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
But I don't want to do, I don't want to hide behind a camera. I want to have them.
Right.
Ken, how does it work for a typical planning board meeting where you're on Zoom? And five thousand Granby residents now want to join in. Does it bog down the system?
No, it doesn't, that doesn't necessarily, it really relies on the internet.
Well, that's, that's.
Times of.
Get it on your computer is a heck of a lot easier. Shit, going down.
Yeah.
Working, you know?
Yeah.
In the public.
And I think.
Probably doesn't go to everything.
And I think, as the Chair mentioned, it is one of those ideas where you could presumably move it to a virtual meeting if you have a light agenda, if this means that you're going to get people to make the meeting.
But if it's a light agenda, we all need everybody.
Yeah.
Would, would clericals?
Clerical slash, you know, there might be some discussion, like workshop, would you rather have a workshop of zoning in person or virtually? So I mean, there's, there's obviously those, that nuance as far as the type of meeting, I think, to answer your question. It really, a Zoom, it requires one account. I have one. I would put the address on the public, the regular agenda notice. People would log in as they typically would. The Board can do so. It would have to be no, public noticed as a hybrid meeting, which means there would need to be a quorum present in the space. So that also was, you know.
You know, there's three of you here in order to have two people participate virtually, vice versa.
So what? So in order to have a hybrid meeting, there has to be three present?
Quorum.
Quorum. But if it's a hearing, the quorum is four.
That's correct. So quorum, so you would, yeah, I mean, the thing is, obviously, if you have a virtual meeting that doesn't have a public hearing, you need to be, have at least three people in Old Library to convene a hybrid meeting.
Okay, that's a hybrid. What's, what's a regular virtual meeting?
You still need to have.
Three people.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just an added lever of, you actually also need to have a quorum present in the space. In addition to having the quorum. So the quorum present, you might not have two Board members virtually in that. You just have a virtual space that's open for the public. Or, I think if you were to plan virtual meetings, which I think you could presumably do, agenda by agenda, just have a virtual address, it would be open to the public. And the expectation is that all members would be, or you would have at least the three present in the virtual space.
You still have to have three.
To have a meeting, yeah.
But do they have to be physically, you're confusing.
Yeah.
Confusing, I mean.
So I, that one I was referencing, if you were just to have a strictly virtual meeting. If you're, so a virtual meeting, one hundred percent virtual meeting, no one is going to be at Old Library, means that you'd have to have three members present to convene a meeting and vote, to be able to vote on things.
Virtually.
Virtually.
Okay, yeah, I get that.
Hybrid, which means in person and virtually, you will still need three people present in the persons present in the space to convene a hybrid meeting.
So if there's two people that can't be present, they can, they can do it virtually, but there has to be three present for a virtual, for a hybrid. For a virtual meeting, everybody can be wherever the hell they want.
Sure, yeah.
So I guess my questions, do they don't typically get bombarded with a hundred public questions?
Oh, I mean, it can be. It depends on like the content, the, the items on the agenda. There would typically be a process. The Chair, we would probably help you get aware of what, how you should run your meetings virtually. There might be a time limit. I, and I can do all the administrative stuff. I can set a time. You have three minutes to talk in the, or five minutes or whatever for each item. If it's a member of the public wanting to respond to something. But it also sounds as if the, you know, the Board is open to, that the Board would want in-person meetings anyway for those types of items. So I, I think what I wanted to do was gauge and, you know, and understand, I think, some, some people's thoughts with regards to this, but also identify the other Boards and how they may be navigating either one hundred percent virtual or hybrid. I think, you know, if it is, sometimes you meet in person, then you can do that, but sometimes you meet virtually, you can do that. But I think for, for this Board's purpose, I think it might be helpful just to like inventory what other Boards are doing and then present to you what they're doing. But.
And that's okay. I'd be more, I'd be more interested in what other towns are doing. Our Board does things that. Downplaying anybody else, but sometimes we're doing site plan review. It's good to have the plans in front of you.
That's right.
Right. Physically in front of you to review them, even in A and R. Understand it. Reviews septic systems, virtually, everything they do is virtual.
Yeah, I mean, the thing, yeah, the thing with virtual meetings is you have me as your consultant to like navigate what that process. Okay, want to talk, I'll say someone raised their hand, you would address them. You would see them on the TV, presumably.
I know the Select Board had a meeting a couple of months ago.
And that was hybrid?
Yeah, I remember it was. And it kept cutting up because there's too many people on it. So what's?
I mean, I think it's, it can be, it can be challenging.
So to me, if that's, if that happens even once during a meeting, the whole meeting's.
Yeah, then you're, yeah.
You've got to start all over again.
Like if something, you get, people are still, you know, Zoom bombing, though that still happens. And if you haven't had, have a contingency plan in your public hearing saying, if something happens, this is going to be continued to this day. You don't talk about it, lost that meeting. You have to be.
Readvertise and start over.
Yep. It all, but I think the benefits of hybrid and the benefits of, of being able to do that, obviously, is with public hearings, if you miss one public hearing, you cannot vote on it. You have a Board of five and you need a four votes, yes votes. For any approval. For any special.
You can miss out to one meeting.
Yes, you can miss out, you, no more than one. But, yeah, I mean, there, you know, with regards to the, the Board, we have had only up to four at a given time. So, you know, discussing how to address that or, or changing the day of the meeting is another option, which.
Well, I know when I ran, I signed up for in-person meetings.
Sure.
I know it's not always convenient, but that's why I signed up. The perp, the, the main, the main purpose of having these virtual meetings was because of COVID. Whether you agree with that or not, that's what started. I don't see a reason why people, they signed up for this, why they can't show up at a meeting. So I think, you know, if there was an, if we had a hearing coming up, we were having problems scheduling it around everybody's schedule. And we wanted to make sure there was five, five present for the meeting, for the hearing. And two of them are on vacation, but still want to, then we could schedule a virtual or a hybrid meeting on, on an as-needed basis, so that the applicant wasn't being, you know, delayed. That's how I feel about it. Again, I'm only one person on this Board, so. It's not like we're driving, it's not like I got to go from here to Springfield twice a week or every other week or whatever it is. This is right here in our neighborhood. It only takes any of us five, ten minutes to get here.
And I think we've discussed this before too, as far as having the material in front of us when we're working on something. I just think going back and forth and going online, it's going to be so much harder to get all that material across. It's just going to be a huge learning curve.
And, and to your point, we all vote to approve the A and R. Okay, it'll be down at the office. We all got to go down there anyway to sign off on it.
Right.
For the, for the court, the courts. So you still got to go out and sign, just for an A and R, you still, it needs three signatures.
Yes, I think the three of us always make the meetings. We all are in favor of being in person. I think it's more efficient. We'll get more done. But maybe hybrid might be a good option for certain, certain scenarios for the other folks.
Maybe it is worth a lot, just like you said, seeing what other communities are doing. I know it's a mix hall of the Board sometime. Boards are still meeting one hundred percent virtually. And they, you know, the remote participation is not allowed everywhere.
How many of those Boards, how many of those communities have a full-time planner?
The Town of Patley needs one hundred percent virtually. They do not have.
Yeah, that's one.
This one.
Right. I'm surprised that first busy, they must be up there.
The city of Northampton, I think. I love that. I love virtual. I don't know. But we can take, we can, we can take inventory. We can take inventory of the other communities. And maybe it's coming up with a policy. Maybe it's something that I just shared with the Board as far as these are what other communities are doing, and this is what Granby is doing for these Boards. And these Boards are meeting one hundred percent virtually, or they're meeting in hybrid, and then, you know, it's a conversation. But I, I don't.
I'd also like to know how efficient they are.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, I show, we show up here, once we can sign off on an A and R, we're done with it. Whatever it may be, we can, we can vote and, and sign off and move the process and, and go to the next item where. Going to virtually. Again. If we meet on Tuesday or Monday, and by the following Friday, everybody's got to get down to Town Hall to sign, sign off on. Plans.
Yeah.
And how do we receive checks? We've got to, we've got to, we'd have to change the process on that. Before we sign off, before we vote, do we have a check, check in place? Kathy, you have to make sure that we have all that in place before we even vote on it. There's things, there's things like that. We've got to make sure.
Yeah.
We have a process in place. And then grabbing the plans we need and putting, and having somebody come back and put them away.
I am coming to Town Hall, like, not often, but.
You know, so just for a regular housekeeping.
Yeah, I mean, I still don't know where the planning boards files are, so I don't think I know where they are. Because there is research too, that, you know, we determined, sometimes with permitting, that, I don't know if we've ever, maybe there was one where I was like, I don't even know how to, I have a need to go wherever these, these files are stored and kind of navigate from there. And it's likely now that there is more of a budget to support my, you know, contribution to doing stuff like that. Yeah, I find myself here maybe once every other week for a couple of hours. But I'll do that research and I think it'll be very helpful.
I don't, I don't want to make, I want a full Board when we make a decision, virtual or other ways.
I'd agree.
Just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just two good questions. Let's say a simple A and R comes through. These lame consulting stuff, do they submit to you in the?
Yes.
They do?
Typically.
Typically.
Well, and what I've asked Kathy was like, sometimes, I haven't yet engaged with the, the developers. And I'm slowly starting to respond, but Kathy has typically asked for those documents that she can share with you. As you've seen, you know, some of those A and Rs, you see the scanned copy, which includes a PDF. The presumption is in a hybrid setting too. We will hope that the applicant would be able to bring up that electronic file, it would be presented on the TV, that people could see it, in addition to a paper copy that would be for use, it's well, it's in my heart. So that, you know, it would be for everyone to just have access to, including the public.
So I, I know when we were doing these virtual meetings, they were COVID. I don't, so I think.
How did that work?
The administrator, Town Administrator had the mute button. That's, that's another thing. If we're going to run them that way, the mute button needs to happen from Chair or co-chair or whatever. If you're going to run a meeting, you've got to run a meeting.
Right.
These, some of these meetings can get.
You, yeah, I mean.
Contentious.
That, and it would be the Chair typically. You obviously can create a setting where you have the, the access to the meeting. And really, the only people that are shown on the screen until you elevate a person would be the Board.
So the technology. Have to raise their hand.
Yes, they have to raise their hand to top, and so you would.
It's all in the setting.
Identify that from there. Usually it's up to three hundred people, you know. I could like provide the Zoom link for every meeting.
So see, the other, the other thing is too now, sometimes people aren't here because they're, they're wherever, they're on the roller, whatever, they're calling in. So if you're called, if you're a call-in, you're present, but you're not seeing it.
You're right.
So how do you vote when you're looking at an A and R?
The presumption could be that because they have received the A and R in advance, which should be the case, you shouldn't. This would require a look at what the Board's policies are with regards to when application items come before the Board. You can't expect someone to just roll in with an A and R and expect that Board to act then and there. It would be submit by Friday or submit by Wednesday of the week before, and we'll put it on the agenda, because we have to post on Thursdays.
Great customer service, just like every other business. But bonus, I get what you're saying, but because we're not being convenient, you, the applicant has to take more steps to get approval for something that.
It's, I, I think it's, I mean, for the purposes of a public, the requirements of A and Rs is that they need to be reviewed within twenty-one days, or else they're constructively approved. And I think, you know, some communities that I've worked with, because they meet once a month or they forget that they have a meeting and then cancel the meeting, then all of a sudden they have a constructively approved A and R, because their develop, their applicant is very smart. So it is working with the applicant to understand that there typically is a process by which you post.
There's no appeal period on that, so.
A and Rs, I don't think so.
Can they be, can an A and R be virtually signed? Is that legal?
No.
No.
You have to approve it, and then you have to go to this.
Physically, typically, yeah. It's okay, I didn't know if the digital signature.
No. Yeah, you need to, because those need to be recorded and monitored. In Northampton, so it is one of those.
All right, there's no way.
Old, yeah, old Massachusetts laws.
Sure. Yeah, we're not changing that, I'll leave it.
So I think with regards to hybrid meetings is maybe understanding what other communities and planning Boards do as far as a policy, learn, know, understand what other Boards in Granby are doing before they just have the meeting, presenting it to the Board, having the Board talk through it, and maybe see where to go from there. I think it's at the very least. As, as I've mentioned in the past too, as I told the Board, we are working on rules and regulations for the Board. This is basically, so when someone comes before the Board, this is how many applications they're going to do, your fee schedule will be in that document. Because sometimes we're asking, what's the due date, or where is it? Like, where is it in Town Hall?
Somewhere in the city, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so this document will have that, and that does not need to be approved at Town Meeting. That is approved by the law. Here.
So that'll break down different scenario.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Changing multiple lots, that's.
Well, you're, there's very, it's, yeah, it's very specific as to what you can put in those rules and regulations. And that's where you set your policies too. So if, if the Board were ever to explore any sort of, let's say, you know, the Board wants to do something with regard, or the Town wants to do something with regards to Affordable Housing Trust. You have CPA and, let's say that the Town has CPA, but if there is a funding source or if there is a mechanism for funds to come into the Town that is supposed to support affordable housing development, the planning Board may typically be the entity that convenes that, and your rules and regulations, let's kind of spell out, you know, how that works.
Affordable, I didn't think the Town had any, any of the zoning had anything to do with, with affordable housing.
It, if the Board, if the Town approved any, a new zoning bylaw, something like inclusionary zoning, which is, yeah, so if there was a, a way for.
You're saying something else. Affordable housing can go in Town without, without approval. But if we're designating zoning for that, that's, that's different. Is that what you're saying?
Yes and no. If there is, if there is a zoning bylaw which says that a certain amount, if you have in your zoning bylaw which states that fifteen percent of anything over twenty units needs to have an affordable unit, either built on, built or included as a fee as well.
That's, that's.
Very separate, and that's what would fund, you know, something like that.
Somebody wanted to come in and build affordable housing, and Town has nothing to do with it, other than the building departments.
Unless it's a forty B, which is, then it's a zoning board. Comprehensive department, which is affordable housing in nature, but removes all of the other regulations of the Town and the ZPA is, is the entity that approves the comprehensive department. It's going to be a conversation for whether or not.
It's coming.
Yeah, it's coming. The, you know, my suggestion to the Town Administrator is looking, we're obviously waiting for this grant, for the zoning grant, to see if we can work on the zoning changes. We can still chip away at zoning changes, that's not a big deal, but any wholesale, like, review of the document and trying to figure out if it makes sense to reorganize, the grant was. trying to figure out if it makes sense to reorganize, the grant was gonna support that, I hope that the town has that grant. Uh, but there may be other planning things that the town may want to, you know, pursue. Things like housing production. Um, you have a master plan, it's now eight years old about. Um, so that could be something that the planning board would have a garden. Um, yeah, so.
They, they usually spearhead it.
Usually spearhead, but the planning board, you know, doesn't necessarily need to be the committee that oversees the entire process. They can, putting a lot of bonus on the planning board for that, um, and I've seen the planning board offer two members of the planning board serving on that committee, et cetera, but that's, you know, a future conversation of writing master planning. Um, but yeah. What are, what are, how, how, the conversation ended there? Um, so it was, the next item was a proven site, site plan approval decision for forty-seven Hammer Street. I did mention to the chair that also due to the weirdness of accessibility, it is complete.
Do you have it there?
In here, no, cause I can't get.
Can't, you still can't.
Yeah, I, it, it, yeah, it's in my computer.
So we can't vote on it?
You haven't typically voted on, if you want to continue to do that, then, yeah, you would need to vote on it. It's the, it's the special permit, the special permit, obviously, the decision was written, that's important for it to move forward. The site plan approval met all of the other zoning criteria. It, you know, it is a part of the process. But if the board typically has, I don't know if it's been consistent, if the board has typically allowed through vote to have the chair sign it, or know that they can review it, the chair still signs it.
That's. So we, we discuss things you dictate, and you go back and craft the, the decision. Then it comes back for review, and then it's voted on for the chair to sign.
So it is, you do.
You leave something out, and I sign it, I don't wanna be responsible for.
It's fair.
I mean, it, it, I'm just, it's happened before, you know, prior to you. We should all make sure it has the content that we discussed.
We agree.
Nothing got left out or anything got inadvertently cut and pasted or whatever.
Okay, so then what I will suggest is, um, we'll use the next meeting to do that, obviously. Um, can we talk about the future meetings? Cause we're now like entering the holidays, the November is.
You got vacations coming up?
I, my, I have a vacation.
You could go virtual.
I have a vacation, but it's not typically a week. Um, my vacation is the first week of December, and you don't typically meet on the first Monday.
So what are you thinking?
So I'm thinking that we meet on the eleventh, oh, that's Veterans Day.
Can't.
Can't.
So he- here's, here's my thoughts on that, so we meet on the twelfth, if we have something. I know there's, there's things that we could be working on, like amending some of the, the bylaws. That doesn't, that, that can wait until after holidays.
I, I think it can, I mean, based on the town meeting schedule, just making sure that you will probably get drafts. And I think it's a matter of ensuring that the draft, you would have to, obviously, something to comment upon.
Drafts.
Drafts of anything, right, if we were to think about workshopping a certain bylaw, the idea would be, okay, you're sharing with me sentiments regarding looking at this bylaw. So can, this will prepare something, or P D C will prepare something, and we schedule a workshop as we did years ago when we looked at some of the zoning.
Actually, after the holidays, that's a good time to do, it's usually kind of slow.
But, um, yeah, I don't know, let me see.
But as far as anything that, that comes up, you know, an A and R, we can, we can, I don't want, I, I hate having applicants, you know how hard it is to get stuff done as it is?
Right.
And, well, they're not meeting this month, they're not meeting for another two weeks. It bogs things down.
I.
And we can always meet, you know, for an A and R or something that, we can always schedule a meeting as long as we, we give it ample.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, two days before, that's how I typically do it, but then there's a suggestion that I've given too, with like, have it by a certain date. On a regularly scheduled meeting, that's what I. Um, so maybe if we put down a meeting on the twelfth, I will, that's a Tuesday, that's the day I, I, um, don't have anything on the twelfth in the evening, where we could schedule that for regular five thirty, we would have the forty-seven Hammer Street approve the sets of minutes, and maybe discuss, you know, the, a work plan, I did want to bring up to the board that my understanding, based on talking to one of my colleagues who has worked with the town before on stormwater, this is the MS four permit, which is a requirement through the EPA, is that the town has an order against it with regards to compliance with that is for permit. So, the board, uh, P D P C will be working with the town to, in some capacity, probably through like a technical assistance request to navigate how to get the board compliant. But what that also means, or not the board, sorry, the town, what that also means is that there are some components of the zoning bylaw that probably will need to be addressed to attract, to align with.
Well, the site plan approval, that's what you're saying. That'll have to be, if, if we adopt it, site plan approval requirements will have to change.
Hmm, to, to reflect alignment with the stormwater.
Yes.
Bylaw that the town will pass. So really, it is just conforming to whatever the stormwater guidelines the town passes. And it's in language only, there's no content within the zoning bylaw, the gist of the bylaw is all in the uh, general bylaw, which is gonna be happening to the select board. The select board also is going to be the stormwater authority, which means that they're gonna be issuing the stormwater permits. Uh, and those regulations are for the select board.
Pretty strict too.
So.
Where's virtual?
Um, it will be, so I think in the next meeting on the twelfth, what I will is probably share with the board work that was done a couple of years ago when we attempted to work with the town in adopting this, the stormwater bylaw. Um, share technical memos with you, I, I think it's clear that in some of those planning meetings, this was during the pandemic too, so. All weird, um, during those planning meetings, there was con- conversation regarding certain type of site plan criteria that Jim is referring to, um, that, you know, may or may not be something that the, the town wants, so.
I think some of it's mandated, but.
Some of it is, but I think things like low-impact development, green development, things that would meet the stormwater criteria, however, uh, maybe a departure of certain types of development that you've approved in the past, but now require that as the floor, that obviously is a change. Um, so I, it's bringing, but, you know, just refreshing the board's memory with regards to that technical memo, identifying some things. But at the end of the day, the minimum that we have to do is align the zoning bylaw to what the town bylaw will be. It will need to happen at the same time, so.
What's the process for adopting it?
Zoning bylaw? It's public hearing?
No, you said the select board.
Oh, they have to go through a public hearing for their bylaw, and then a councilor town meeting. So, the zoning bylaw would follow the same, well, obviously through chapter forty-eight zoning act. You have, the planning board has specific actions, they have to have a public hearing, and also go to town. Start subdivision regulations, that may be something that is something you want to be addressing, any subdivision regulation that they hold. So it may be worthwhile to take a look and identify any additional changes.
Well, I know there have been recommendations.
Yeah.
And we've, we've given waivers on, on what Pioneer Valley has been recommending, on their recommendations, about going from a thirty-foot to a twenty-foot wide street.
Yeah, I mean.
Th- those are types of things, yes.
Yeah, and the board has every right to waive certain standards. Um, obviously, you work with the other, um, department head said, you know, if there was something specific to fire or D W, um, with regards to some of those requirements. But I can spell out, identify what happened during that regulatory review for the MS four permit, and the identified proposed changes for the slacking.
I was on that, I think.
Yes, and he's the one that, you know, I, that my colleague has been in contact with him. To identify a process for the town to com- comply with MS four. But I just wanted to, you know, inform the board that with even all of the things that need to be adopted by the town and that the Slacker will be leaving, I'll be working with the planning board to ensure that there's alignment with those. So if anything, we know that there's going to be amendments before the town in. Only update, I'm not, I haven't received any notification yet regarding the planning assistance grant that we apply for, for the zoning bylaw review, uh, but that should be forthcoming, like, I should be hearing like any day. Yeah.
Without further discussion, I'll entertain our motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.